Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call to order this December 7th, 2023, meeting of the Madison Planning and Zoning Commission. Present tonight, we have, this is going to be an alphabet of order, Mike Bogdan, John Duzo, Don Morgan joining us remotely, Bob O'Connor joining us remotely, Janet Peckinpah, Bob Reinhardt, new member Andrew Rubin, go by name. Anyway, it would be great, welcome, and myself, Carol Snow, Chair. Because we have a new member, I thought we'd just take a few minutes to let Andrew Rubin introduce himself, and then maybe we'll just even go down the line and just say a few sentences about ourselves or our professional backgrounds.
Andy Rubin, legally Andrew, but my wife and I have lived here in town, moved here in the summer of 1991, from New York, originally from Massachusetts. We have two boys, both through the Mass school system, both are out, graduated and gainfully employed. Yeah, full disclosure, my youngest son works for Shore Publishing, he doesn't cover Madison, he covers the North Haven, East Haven and the Valley, but he does write for them, pictures and okay, and the source everything. So my other son is an engineer for, and was just called NCR, he was out in Montana. And I was heavily involved for years with Madison Little League, was a board, ran a good part of the league, helped set up another league afterwards, baseball guy, baseball college, team Mass Amers, Massachusetts. So I've always loved this town, I want to be involved, my wife and I, unlike others, don't really want to retire somewhere sunny and warm all the time, we like it here, we'd like to stay here, so I'd like to help any way we can as we, you know, get older and have things, you know, work out for us from a planning and zoning perspective, and I just think there's a need for it. I like to get back to the town, and that's what I like to do. From a professional perspective, I I am in the renewable energy business, I work for what's called New Jersey-based Energy Engineering Care and Construction Firm. We design, build, own and operate solar, battery storage, wind shield, all kinds of stuff like that. I run sales, business development, marketing, I have a whole commercial front end of things. I got into that a few years ago, I spent 25 years with GE Capital and GE Financing, all kinds of assets, financing, energy assets, that got me into the engineering side of things, so I have a passion for that. And I think that there's some, I get involved a lot with other municipalities and other customers as we look to acquire land for our own purposes, to put solar up, as we call it, in front of the meter, or help customers also, so I'd be a lot involved with permitting and everything, and I thought this could help, I could learn and contribute. And originally, they wanted me to be on the energy community, like, I thought that would be like, don't work, I can't do it.
This is kind of like that too.
Yeah, so I figured this way, at least I, maybe I can help more, maybe I can learn something along the way, so it's thanks for having me, I appreciate it, and I look forward to helping writing.
Okay, John Duzo.
Briefly, I'm John Duzo, financial advisor, I'm a policy attorney, live in Mass for five years. Two teenagers, one who plays softball, baseball connection, trusted working space, planning issues, commissioned for over a year, so far so good.
And Sarah Ginnis.
That's right.
Hi, Janet.
Janet Peckinpah, I am right now selling real estate for some reason. Been a fast resident for two years, I was in Essex for fourteen, and chair of the development. I love getting back, I was a teacher for a while, and I worked for thirty years before I retired.
You? Okay, so, no, I'm especially I worked for over forty years as a conservator of cultural heritage, which included working on archaeological sites on the Mediterranean, which was a top job. I don't think I've ever mentioned that I actually have children, so I thought I'd just say that I have a son and a daughter.
We overlook this.
I should say that they both became doctors this year, one a PhD, one a doctor. And, yeah, you might hear me also talk about fostering rescue dogs, so. But I grew up in Madison, swore I'd never come back when I graduated from hand, and here I am, back again. Next.
I'm not going to retire, I'm an excellent engineer. I came from Lexington, Massachusetts, where we met, but I had met her on a blind date, and she was with my parents way back in the eighties, and I had time I was working in a special. So I came up here, and we moved down here about five years ago.
Hi, Andy, I'm Bob Reinhardt, I've been, we've been in Madison now for about six years. I'm recently retired, and so I'm an engineer as well, so I'm sorry about that.
I've worked with you guys all day. I'm just playing an engineer. I'm a lawyer.
Anyway, so I've been on the mission now.
I know, I was thinking that.
Not sure how long it is, it's close to a year, if not a year. So, yeah, it's been a lot of fun, and if you want to learn, this is good, because everything here is different. And it's a lot of stuff you can learn, so it's been great.
Oh, and by the way, there are training. Speaking of learning, four hours daily required training, so let me know more about that.
Erin Maddox, I'm Erin Maddox, the town planner, I've been in this position for a little over two years now for the town, also a resident, live here with my husband and four children. I'm here to assist you, the commission, in multiple applications and all sorts of endeavors that come before you, to assist you on the regulations and get you resources that you need to help you get your job. I also staff several other commissions and committees or boards around the town, so can be a good resource for connecting you for your
Jaren, John Morgan, next up.
John Morgan, I'm a Connecticut native through and through, grew up in West Haven, moved to Madison about twenty-eight years ago. I have two kids who have gone through the school system, my wife has a business in town, and I'm recently retired from Traveler's Insurance. And I kind of like, I think what other people have said, but really enjoy Madison, I want to give something back, and now that I have the time, trying to do that.
Thanks, John, how about Bob O'Connor?
Okay, quickly, my connection with Madison began in 2013 when I went to my high school reunion. I'm a Connecticut native, but I hadn't seen my prom date in years. Now, believe it or not, we are happily married, and we have a couple of grandkids in the school district here. What I do professionally, I taught the local politics course at Penn State for thirty years, and since 2001, I've been the program manager, the program director for a program called Decision Risk and Management Sciences in the Social Science Directorate at the National Science Foundation. In the background, you can see the slow-moving traffic is the Baltimore Beltway, people heading toward the Woodrow Wilson Bridge, which still takes a long time to get across this time in the evening. So I'm learning a lot.
John Guskowski, can we have you say a few words as our consultant?
Sure, hi, John Guskowski, I'm a planner and consultant with Tyke Planning and Policy Group, which is a Connecticut-based, municipally-focused planning group. And, and we have been involved in Madison for the last three years or so, initially to help out bridging the gap between your prior planner and, and onboarding Erin, which we are happy to say we were involved in, in hiring. And then writing the Town of Madison Plan of Affordable Housing Plan, and then have been retained to help facilitate the, the writing of the update of the plan of conservation and development, which is why we've been attending these, these first meetings of the month, and, and happy to have you on board.
Thanks, John. Erin's, I don't know, I think she's doing like a security check or something. But, as you said, John, the first Thursday of the month is our planning meeting, and we are focusing on the plan of conservation and development update this year. The last plan of conservation and development was done in 2013. So we've been working on it for actually over a year, I think we started last, the fall of 2022. And so at our last meeting in November, working on the plan of conservation and development, we thought we needed to provide some more context to sections that were under, still being drafted, so we've been working on that since our last meeting. And then Bob Reinhardt has very kindly offered to put a lot of work into sort of consolidating as we get closer to the conclusions and recommendations and guidelines for implementation, so we're gonna, we're gonna spend tonight, we don't expect that you've all read the latest draft, which I think you just got yesterday, and that's okay, because we're going to talk about, more about where we're going, and Bob Reinhardt's going to give a PowerPoint presentation, kind of summarizing where we've come from and, and where we're headed, and we're hoping that it all makes sense to everyone, and if we get buy-in from the other commissioners and support for where, what we've done so far and where we're going. So Bobby, ready, and Erin, you're gonna share the PowerPoint, I think?
Where's the microphone? No, not that.
Right there.
Okay, good, then I'll stand up here. That's where I can see everybody. So it's not so much a PowerPoint as Erin, Carol, Carol and I have met a few times trying to put this together, and one of the things we first figured out was that everyone's talking, saying the same thing, but saying it a different way. So we thought, instead of talking, we just need to put some stuff down on paper, get everyone aligned, and just to start getting some progress on this. So the idea right now is that from the last meeting, the request was to, for us to go off, look at the policies we have and kind of reimagine them, so maybe they made not more sense, but were just more easy, a little more easy to understand and, my perspective, communicate to people, because there were so many. So that's what we did, so we go to the next slide. So just real quick, first thing we need to do is talk about terminology, strategy, policy, goal, tech, all those things. We're just going to come up with a, a way of looking at what the terminology could be, and hopefully we can just agree to use this, we can have another two-hour meeting to discuss which terminology is better, but it doesn't really matter, as long as we can be aligned and consistent, we'll have the ability to move forward. We can keep arguing over policy for a strategy, which is my fault, we'll get stuck, so we're just going to go forward with what we have, hopefully. Then what we want to do is a preview of where we landed, so I'm going to jump to the end of the story, read the last chapter first, just show you where we ended up, not get into the details of it on that slide, but give everyone a sense of where we are, so that you'll have a better night, better idea of what we're talking about as we go through. Then go through the review discussion of the vision, the goals, the themes and perspectives, and the biggest discussion will be about how we reimagine the policies. And then we have next steps, okay? We're working on this a long time, so we're trying to push this forward really fast. Okay. After much deliberation, and a lot of yelling and screaming, we came down to this terminology. It's, it can be changed, but we'd like to keep this, if we're consistent, it makes it easy. The idea is that there's a vision for Madison, what Madison can become in ten years. That vision exists already in the POCD now, I'll bring it up on the slide so you can see it. There are the goals, which are basically baked into that vision, which we teased out, and we came up with three separate goals for the POCD. Nothing new here, just a re-imagination, a reworking of how it was already built into the POC. Realize it's sealed. The next one of the themes, which we haven't changed, they're the same things you've had, those are those two-word themes, there's three of those. And also, we'll talk about the perspectives, which is the natural and built environment, which for me was the biggest problem as far as trying to really get my arms around what the POCD was trying to do. Then we'll jump into the policies, okay, then the last thing, then the last terminology is action. We're not going to talk about actions tonight, we just want to stop the policies. Our goal would be to get everyone aligned on the change in the way the policies are drafted. No new policies, just a different way of wording them and pulling them all together. So that's the terminology we hope everyone can get lined up with, if we just go with this, we're okay. If we want to argue about changing the words, we should do that at a different meeting, because we'll never get through anything else. Okay? It's
Is John, can I just ask, is John Guskowski?
Yes, yeah, and I think, because I think substantively, we talked about this, substantively, in terms of the things we want to do and the way we envision Madison, is unchanged from our discussion in our prior drafts. This is, this is really a, a way of organizing the principles and getting from the biggest, you know, the biggest vision to the smallest actions, in a way that, that, you know, sort of makes sense, that sort of gets us through the funnel, if you will.
Okay. Too small, you don't have to read this, we're going to go through each of these separately, but the idea is just to show that the vision then drives the goals, like happened in the prior, so the vision is what we want, what we, you can say it's aspirational, but the idea is what can Madison become in ten years if we are effective in, in implementing the POCD? That then drives the goals, because you need something to chase. That then, you take the thing that came out of that, those goals, and the themes also were built on all of the work done as far as what the current situation is within Madison, and what we see happening over the next ten years. And then finally, you get into the policies, the policies are the meat of it, that's what we need to try to do. In some ways, you can consider them goals, but the policies are what we're going to try to really get down to and write the, assign them to those in the town government and volunteers and whoever else, and chase those the next ten years to try to develop and achieve that vision. Okay, so just a quick overlay, so you can, so when I start talking about different things, you'll see how it fits. Do the next one. So the vision, this comes straight from the POCD, so I actually thought it was, it's very well-written, it's, it's when I read it, it's something I want to work on, because it's, it's nice, it's where I think, and this is all work that was done well before I started. And so I think this is as it is in the POCD, I didn't see any reason for us to redraft it or propose a change to it. So it's really here just for completeness, so y'all can see where we're going. And the idea of walking through all this is because it gets really confusing very easily, so I'm just going to lay it out as this is where we end up. I'm not going to read through it, you all have seen this. Go to the next one. So from the vision, it's funny, I, I drafted these as the goals for the POCD without reading the vision, but with reading all of the policies and some of the background information and the like, and I ended up, I found out that what I wrote is basically what John wrote in the vision, and I'd never written the vision. So the work done within the POCD to define what we're trying to do was really well-done, because it led me to this. And the work done in the POCD was jumping off of the original vision, so it's good. We've got, from two different angles, we landed in the same place. So the goals here, it's basically, and this also reflects the themes. Madison is a community that exhibits a high vitality, connects people to each other, to our history, and to the natural resources around us. And as you see, as we start talking about the policies, you can see how I started taking different policies and smashing it together to simplify what we have, and to make it a little easier for us to pursue. Next one is works that sustaining a high quality of life for all and is resilient in the face of current and future challenges. That's a couple of different policies that are already in there, and is growing responsibly and offers all residents the opportunity to participate in that growth. Okay? The themes and perspectives haven't changed, okay, it's the same ones that are in there. The only thing we've done is perspectives persist, but they're not going to be called out anymore as these policies line up with this perspective, so we're not going to have the proposal, it's not to have policies that are written just to address the natural environment, and just to address the built environment, because we had policies which are duplicative. And when you looked at one thing that was a natural environment, you could argue, well, you have to build that, so is that natural? So you ended up with this artificial separation. We considered bringing into this the human environment, which then gets us with the regional one.
Yes.
So the regional they have natural, built-in human. But the reality is, it's, I didn't see the point of saying a human environment, writing a document for a town where people are, the only reason we're doing it is because there are humans here, it just seemed ridiculous to say, this is the human environment. These cover it, the human environment is everything else around it, it drives everything. So we decided not to do any more additional work and create a whole section on that. I thought that would be good. The policies, and I'll go through these on the next two slides in bigger font, so we can walk through each one. But the idea is that we came down with seven, I think originally there were I think twelve?
Twelve, I think, yeah.
Originally, there were twelve. And in a couple of meetings with, with Carol and Erin, we really looked at it all, and what started to do was look at the policies and then also the actions that were slotted under each policy, because actions really help to define the intent of the policy. And when you start looking at that, you start to see a lot of commonalities, and we ended up with these seven different policies.
But these are succinct, rather than being kind of overlapping.
Yeah, these, these are, there's always overlap, but they're a little more specific, right? You can say, okay, your job is to do this, and you shouldn't have to worry too much about someone else doing another one. It should be somewhat independent, but it's, it's a town, it's a POCD, they're always going, it's a Venn diagram, there's always going to be overlap, right? If you go to the next one, we'll just go through each one. So, there's also at the end, if you can cheat, if you want to look forward, there's a matrix we put together to show how the new policies and the old policies intersect. Just to show that none of the old policies were left out, and how you can see how some of the new policies address multiple ideas in some of the original policies. So the first one is build a community where people can easily connect, that's wrong, connect with each other through a collection of spaces and places that are easily accessible, and where residents can go, can gather to celebrate shop work and play. Those are two very specific policies, before, one was natural, one was built, but this is one of the policies. But I'd like to just go through them, and then we just have a discussion on all of them, none of them, any of them, doesn't really matter, okay? Second one, bring people closer to the, to this is why I'm an engineer, English is like my second language. Bring people closer to nature in Madison. And build the town's reputation as a place of great natural resources, this is where we'll need John's help to clean up my English. Third one is preserve our historic and cultural landmarks, public and private, and then integrate into daily life when possible. One of the ideas that was in the, some of the actions within one or two of the original policies was the idea of making the resources available to preserve cultural landmarks or historic landmarks, making the resources we have available understood by all the residents, so they can have access to it. And so to me, that meant there is an opportunity for us maybe to help private property to be preserved into the future, if we have public funds to help do that. So it's something we should consider, and if we don't want to do it, then we just cut it out. But it was implied in some of the actions that were already built into the POCD, so I wanted to capture it. And I tend to be more of the, this is kind of what it says, we're just going to say straight out, this is what it says, and then we can have a nice big argument about whether we should have it in there or not. But let's not have it hidden, the patients would be bold and say, we want to do this, or we do not want to do this. I was the same to you last time. Go to the next one. Preserve our historic I'll let you read that, so we'll be, improve the sustainability of our community's natural, public and private resources. Prepare our community to be resilient in the face of climate change and future social, economic, and natural challenges. Those two actually built into one of the policies before I, I broke them out, but then they also grabbed a few other existing ones. Promote the expansion of commercial and retail businesses that are appropriate for the town. Hate to say, but that comes straight from Guilford's POCD, that it was well-done. And diversify the housing stock supply to meet the needs of households with a range of income, family size, and ages. So it's, to me, it's, that's about the idea of, it's not affordable housing, it's housing which can be afforded by people in different phases of their life, if they're young, with little kids, if they're older, if no one wants to leave Madison, but they don't need a three-thousand square foot house, or they don't want a yard, we need a place that they can stay in Madison, so we need to figure out how, if that's what we want to do, how do we do that? How do we promote that? Okay. Just so you know, these were the original policies. Okay? So a policy of sharing a natural environment, connecting people to the environment, those two are broken into one now. Also, with the connect residents, both within, these basically all kind of start to pull together into one, and then broken into another one as well.
I think there are eleven, actually.
Eleven? I thought there were six on this side, two, three, four, five, six, one, two, three, five, eleven, yeah.
But I think this speaks to the, you know, what we were finding as we were working our way through the, the draft and through the natural environment and the built environment, how much overlap and how interconnected they were. We kept saying that, and then we weren't sure how we were going to manage or deal with it, yeah, so this is
And every time I read it, I couldn't read the policies here and then see these and not just force a reference between the two. And then the idea of selecting stakeholders and owners to execute and try to complete these policies, you ended up with the same people doing different policies, kind of from different perspectives, but it's basically the same thing we're trying to do. So that's, that's the whole premise of this, to get rid of the, this, I think this is an artificial separation of the policies and just go with the seven we have. And go to the next slide, this, this should show you, yeah, might be some over here. But the idea that the natural environment, they're too worried, I couldn't stick it up here, so A, B, C, D for the natural, A, B, C, D, E, F for the built, and the X is show how the original policies, parts of it were reflected in the redrafted policies. So to ensure that we haven't left anything out. We did already start taking the actions that are listed in the POCD and on the spreadsheet, it's not here, but we have started putting them underneath each of these policies. Some of them fit really well, some don't, I think a lot of them probably have to be reworked to some extent. What came out too was this realization that there is some actions which I, I would call a strategic action, they're big, it's going to take a lot of different tasks and activities to complete it, and a long time to complete it, and you need a fairly good team to get it done. Then there are some other actions which are pretty small and discreet, you could probably assign it to a person and say, get it done by two weeks. It's a government, four weeks. But we don't want to lose those, because they're really good, I tend to think we should have the strategic actions, the big-picture actions to drive what we're trying to accomplish, but those, those discreet ones are really strong, so we want to gather those and keep them and put them under the, each of the policies as well. Okay? All right, and then just go back to where we where I showed you where we started. So the vision hasn't changed, the goals really are just, you can even go through here, if you put a hard, put a hard return after each sentence agenda with three goals, it's just a rephrasing. I think this is the elevator speech, I always like to say, what are you guys doing, we're doing these three things. That's all you need to know. Everything else in the POCD colors it, provides a lot more detail, the, the description of vitality and connectivity in the POCD is really well-written, but it's long and you can't repeat that to someone, you can say this. This basically is that description in a nutshell. And then the policies we just talked about. Okay?
Great. Nice job, you guys.
Thanks, Bob.
Oh, we did it, we've met a lot, so. And next steps, if you wanted, I can go through it, but you wrote them.
Sure, I think, and these are subject to change, but just to give you a general idea of what's to come. Our hope for this evening is to gain some, gain consensus amongst all of you on the redrafted policies. If you want to take some time to look at some of the language in them, I'm not sure that John had an opportunity to look at all of them either while you were away last, you know, for the week, so that's, that was really our focus this evening. And just to get Get. Everybody's nod of approval of. The approach, you know, this combined policy. And, and understanding that these were written through both the lenses of. The built environment and the natural environment, but are, are really. A little simpler, I think, to understand as you're reading this. And then the second is, is Bob already discussed, gather the actions that we have in the, in the draft P O C D. And those are all the items that were in our implementation tables and to start finding the appropriate columns. Of, of the policy in which they would fit best. And we've started some of that work outside of our meetings to, to get a head start on that, but we would anticipate. Bringing Matt before you for January and inviting anybody else who wants to take a stab at where you think those might fit. To do that. And again, number three is this, this concept of some of these actions are larger tasks. Multitask items and, and some are simple or a single task and. That maybe there would be value in identifying them as such in the plan. And, and then to take another look back at our working draft and. The, the written text of the document to make sure that. These redrafted policies and the goals align specifically with chapters or sections three and four of our draft.
Let me just jump for a second. So when I was working on this, I didn't go back and reread the whole P O C D. I took it on faith that policies and the actions that had already been identified were addressing. All the components that were identified in the P O C D as being important. But because I didn't do that, there's a possibility that some of those may have been overlooked in the simplification. So that's really what I wanted to do is just, just to check back to make sure we didn't miss something important that was. Identified in one of the eleven that we just inadvertently overlooked. So it's just a.
So yeah, I just wanted to add to that, Bob, that during the month while you were working on focusing on this. And, and sort of cleaning things up and heading us in the right direction is how I see it. I went back and focused more on finishing off the built environment, you know, sort of putting it, putting things in context. Which we're kind of missing at that point, seeing how it balances with the nat- natural environment, but also making sure that it, it also leads in this direction. And, and it, it made me realize that the process, you know, the process we established from the beginning. We may have, we could have done it many different ways and, but yet it seems to have worked in that it gave us the structure and the framework that we needed to get. To where we are. So it's really exciting, I think, to, to sort of look at it from both, both sides.
Yeah. And, and I think also. Along those lines, we, we've written. What these, you know, these goals and these policies are, and, and this was led by feedback that you received from stakeholders. You know, these, the workshops that you held on both the natural environment and the built environment. And so now that we've, you know, once we finalize or, or list what our policies are here, right? And get into our actions, now we want to go back also and make sure that. We have some additional feedback from those stakeholders. Let's share this information, get some feedback from them for the draft. So that's where number five is. And, and so along with that, we can update our implementation chart because the action items may change. Hopefully, you know, the responsible parties, you know, I, I don't foresee that as a complicated step. We've really kind of already identified those stakeholders. But perhaps we'll have a few more added in there. And then John and his team are working on some mapping as well. That's another key piece that's going to come into the written text. You know, in, into the final draft, so we're going to start piecing some of that in as well. And then hopefully assembling this into our document. And that's when we want to have a meeting, really just a discussion meeting. For the public to, just like this, explain where we are, what our path was coming here, get some feedback. At that point, we'll have already heard from stakeholders and now it's a more of an informal public discussion. From that, you can finalize any other changes that you have. We do have to go through mandatory referral process and posting of the plan prior to your formal public hearing. And, and really just for your knowledge, there is a sixty-five day referral period for the plan prior to the hearing. And so that's to your regional council of governments and the board of selectmen as well. So keeping in mind that we did. Embark on this journey in September of twenty twenty-two, so we're over a year and, and we're. Heading into the new year. So I think it may be helpful to have a. An ideal month for holding a public hearing or adoption, you know, an, an end goal in sight and then start working our way backwards. You know, we have been meeting only once a month on this, but perhaps we may need to. Put in a little more time over the next few months to really kind of push that document and, and be able to get. Feedback from the public and, and schedule those public sessions so that we can give ourselves the full two months before a, a public hearing.
I also want to add, Erin, that last month Mike Bogdan read through the draft too and submitted comments and suggestions and. We encourage everyone else, mission to go at it and let us know. Whatever changes or additions or anything need to be made. So, or we can, you know, we can even have. Hate to say it, but more subcommittees or sub-subcommittees or. Anyway, we can have a team of people working on this if we need to, as you said, Erin, if we need to step up the pace a little bit.
Erin, can you put it back up?
Oh, I'm sorry.
All the policies, just so we can, since everyone has them in front, they can read them. Just ask if any questions.
Bob O'Connor, I think your hand was up for a while, but we just.
Yeah, no, I, I. Very, very briefly, but this is, this is outstanding progress in, in my view. Bob and Carol, thank you for all your work. The one, one, a couple of comments, one, the A, B, C, D, E chart, I didn't understand what A, B, C, D, E was. I probably have forgotten it. My only real suggestion behind the fact that the nature doesn't work is I think we need a better definition of. Of natural environment. I'd go with something like natural environment. Are places such as fields, forests, marshes and waters. Where human intrusion in built structures are, are quite limited, something like that. But anyway, this is just word, wordsmithing. I think conceptually, you guys have done a fantastic job. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I think, you know, there's a lot of wordsmithing that can, that still can be done. And John Gaskowski, we're relying on you for a lot of that. So.
We do have that defined in the.
Yeah, we have.
In the working draft.
The natural environment in the draft, but I think Bob O'Connor is suggesting that we expand upon that maybe a little bit. And we've also talked about having sort of sidebars, you know, like open space is another term that's come up.
Findings, yeah.
Meaning different things to different people. So. Again, you know, I think as we, as we move along and refine and polish and wordsmith or however you want to describe it. And whether John's doing it or anyone else has suggestions for how to, how to clarify any of those terms and definitions.
Just the clarification. I think the way it is now, it says that's. You know, it's basically what hasn't been affected by humans and there's nothing in Madison that hasn't been affected by humans.
True. I think there might be one sound of trees in Salt Meadow Park that is considered.
No, it's what we need. But anyway, this, this is minor.
Yeah.
But if you put it in writing, Bob, that'd be great.
I will do so. I'll send it.
Yeah, the comments, you know, in the Word doc to, to track your comments is helpful and that way we have them all in one place. And can go back and, and as John and his team are there making some edits, they can incorporate the feedback from the commission too.
Could we use the current draft version?
Yes, the one.
Did you guys send out the clean one?
We sent out one that doesn't have even other comments, like Mike Bogdan's comments were in some of mine, I think still there, but.
I don't, I don't know that it, I don't think printed, but that was the one that was attached to the.
Yeah, it should, they should still be there.
You can see Michael's, you can hit the whole record button.
Yeah, you just have to get it right edited.
Yeah, exactly.
Going there and editing.
Okay. Just before we get into going through the policies, John, did you have any? Thoughts on the consolidation or the, the direction we're headed, even next steps? Are you comfortable?
I think I'm largely comfortable. I think, you know, we, I, I will look at sort of, you know, wordsmithing a little, little bit, but I. You know, having read through at least the PowerPoint. I, I really don't feel like anything has been lost, which is really the critical element here, you know? That all of the work, all of the input. And, you know, really much of the writing that we did, I, I, you know, I don't think anything in terms of. Where Madison wants to go as expressed by the commission and, and the public has, has been lost in this reorganization. So I, yeah, it. This is, this is just, this is, this is an organizational change, not a, not a policy change.
Yeah, that's pretty much it. Just a reorg of the original policies. So I just asked Erin to bring this up. So if there's any particular one you all want to talk about? If they're aligned with your thinking of what should be in, and we can just give it to John and he can. Make the words flow a little better. But, and again, you're not going to insult me if any or all of them. There's no pride ownership. Just trying to get it down to where it's workable. So if you don't like something, that's fine. Let's talk about it and make it better.
I need some time to review it again.
Okay.
The other thing we might do is we have started putting actions. Under the policies.
You can share that next.
And so we could start sharing that because. Some of them were really obvious and really easy, I think, for you. Other ones were maybe not quite so much, but with the new policies, there's a much better fit.
Yeah.
And, and then we had, I think you had a category. Do you want to talk at all about the app that you were using?
Yeah, so. So I found this app called Trello. I'm not sure if anyone, you know it? Yeah. So Trello, T R E L L O. It's a web based, you can download it as well. What it does, it allows you to. I did it three or four times, ended up with the policies. And then a bunch typed in all the actions and you can just drag and drop them onto each policy. So it's very dynamic. It's easy to do and Carol and Erin, I invited them to it. So when you see it, it's very easy to have a discussion saying, I don't think that should be there, it should be here. It's not Excel where it's a cut paste, you just drag it over. It's very dynamic. So it's the easy way to envision. What we're trying to do. It's difficult to use it on a small screen because it gets pretty long. This probably would work fairly well. But yeah, that's what we've been doing. And so most of, all of the actions that existed. I think all the actions that existed, I put in there. Most of them now live underneath the policy, but there is a group called No Home Yet, where I wasn't quite sure where to put them. Because also I just ran out of time or some of them were just, they were very discreet ones and I wasn't sure what to do with them. And so I think that's where probably the next big step is to just force them onto these something. And then we can talk about each policy and the actions and what they mean. And I think there might be some actions that you're missing.
Yeah.
Because some of the, the easily connect, you know, this policy, there's no overarching action to say, build a plan. For moving people around Madison. There is a, there's a trail plan, there's a discussion about the bikeway plan, there's the. The rail trail, there's all these other subsets, but there's no overarching one that says, this is how people within Madison move about. And that would include buses and.
Right.
There's no, we're, but however you want to do it, some overarching. Holistic approach to making it work. As opposed to discreet ones which can bump up into each other. Yeah. Then you end up wasting resources trying to do something twice.
And we had a brief discussion about, you know, some of these smaller action items and should we include them or not? And, you know, and I think, I think. As we go through this process of, of aligning the actions with policies, if we have leftovers, well. I think it'll be easier to see, you know, how, how they fit. Do they fit? Do they not fit? Should we include them?
Where they belong.
How should we, or should we change them a little bit to see how they should be?
So like just the actions we need to take now before the P O C D, so just do it.
And as you said too, also what's missing because, you know, I'm sure we've overlooked things or, or other things will become obvious or when, when we get more feedback from stakeholders and from the public. You know, someone might say, you forgot the most obvious thing, which is, you know, and.
We're all here.
We'll see how that goes. But I think having, you know, having this kind of structure. And consolidation in place is hugely.
Yeah. Useful. And, and I think it would be great if we achieve these policies. We talked about how to do this. I'm not sure. Time will permit us to do it the way I originally envisioned it, which would be get the stakeholders, we identify each policy together in a room. Talk about it, but then also bring into that room people who are stakeholders. Maybe not with the responsibility of executing the policy, but, and maybe with the different opinion, maybe they don't agree necessarily. So we can have a more robust conversation and make it that much better. So we can have a constructive argument about what we should do.
Discussion.
I think that's how we're going to get it done. Without another year.
Yeah.
We, we have to do that.
Yeah.
You know, moving along faster.
I know the stakeholders have been requested to provide input, but it's a big difference between running something down and sitting here saying, this is it. Want to hit.
What do you think?
The button, it's done, we're not changing it. It'll get a much deeper conversation, especially if you have the actions behind it to really. Bring the policy to life.
You collect all stakeholder value, all information provided, then generally speaking, it's probably more action items to be tackled. So then you need a process to prioritize.
Yeah, yeah, that's what Erin's been talking about. That's that implementation plan. Prioritization. And we purposely didn't put A, B, C, D, E on the F on the policies because we're not saying any one is more important than the other. Prioritization will probably come within the actions and it'll be, what can you get done now? Stuff like that.
Feedback from the audience.
Can you just define what stakeholders? I can imagine.
Yeah.
People was a vested interest in.
Yeah, but people are a subject that are.
I, I do a business.
In charge or invested in something. I mean, actually, in my profession, stakeholder is now considered politically incorrect. I'm not sure exactly why, but. You know, so again, it was, I think when we started this process and we had the natural and the built environment, you can go through, you can even just go to the town website and see the commissions and committees. Yeah. So here. Be the built environment and the natural environment. They would be the stakeholders. There's some private entities, some nonprofits we reached out to.
Like on the prepare a community to be resilient in the face of climate change and future social, economic and natural challenges. Stakeholders would be all the emergency response teams that work in Madison. That's an obvious one because they have to do it. But then stakeholders might be social services. The, the different social services that really.
Youth and family services.
Yeah, stuff like that, that during COVID, they had a big role and they're trying to get us all through it. They're stakeholders. So it's. Anyone we can think of that.
Neighborhood association.
Either has a vested interest in it or, or making it successful or is very interested in participating. So, okay.
Hope it's broad.
Private sector as well.
Yeah, yeah.
It's large.
Private and nonprofit.
Yeah.
Developers and builders.
Yeah.
Come and say, if you want that, then you have to build something to be resilient.
We start putting.
Attorneys, maybe stakeholders.
We put a lot of, a lot of requirements in about green building and all, we need to get, make sure it is.
So a pretty good question, because you all can't perfectly define what stakeholders.
It's a very good question.
Yeah.
Or we all made up different ideas a little bit.
What I found in just a couple of meetings is that we all say the same thing, but we have different words. Okay. To mean it. So that's why we're trying to.
Or we can say the same words and have different ideas about what it means. So we, this is what we hash out. But thanks for asking, yeah. Can I just ask, what is your name?
Jim Waters, I live in nineteen. Nineteen Hamilton Drive.
He's across the street.
Just for our minute taker, that's all. I just wanted to recount to him.
Four or five different addresses in that neighborhood. So trying to remember which one I. Nineteen Hamilton, hopefully the last stop.
Great. Anyone have any other thoughts or discussions or thoughts, reactions? Drawing a lot out here tonight and. You know, it'll take a month or so even to go through the revised draft. You have sort of updated update. And I have, it's still moving us along.
I agree. Okay, all right.
Yeah, I think it's really kind of coalescing and. Yeah, we'll see where it goes.
So next steps, we'll do the, do the actions underneath and send it out to everyone. And then you can consider these in. It's our document, so. in our document. So whatever y'all want to talk about.
And as it, as it all kind of sinks in and you have a chance to, or but react, you know, send whatever thoughts you have.
Excellent example, minimization theory.
Yes. I'd like to keep things, seven was too many for me. I tried to get lower, but it took too much energy.
And I also, I also love that, that the goals that John Gaskowski wrote for us in the beginning
That was.
Um, are so well aligned with the goals that you kind of came up with out of this process.
The goals came from the policies.
Yeah.
Three policies generated those goals and the themes. And then I saw John's paragraph, it just lined up perfect. Cool.
And, you know, and there, there's some sort of broad overarching concepts here, but I hope that they, they will actually translate into actions that make sense and are needed in the town and
Have value.
Have value and, and can be done also.
Yes.
Okay. Um, I just didn't know if you saw the court. Um, and, and John, I think looking at the working draft, we had a couple, our natural and built section were broken out um, into core themes, policies and recommendations under each one. So maybe what we can do, um, is work to see how, how we'll address, um, where we're going to place policies from that. You know, just, I, I, I think the intention is to keep focus on both those perspectives of the natural and built. We don't want to take away from that. Um, and we, you know, still maintaining this, the, uh, the three paired themes throughout. Um, but I think we'll have to rewrite those two sections or reorganize them, I should say, and, and consolidate the policies. Um, and we can do that probably before next month.
Yeah, I mean, as we come up with Actually, it's a good question, Aaron. And we've talked about it a little bit in our smaller sessions, but do we leave everything that we have gathered and collected and written so far as as illustrative of the process, you know, and, and how did we get how from, you know, we started by reviewing the 2013 P O C D and looking at other, you know, the state and the regional and other municipalities, P O C Ds. And then we thought, okay, well, what makes the most sense for Madison? We want this to be about Madison. And, you know, and in that process, I learned a lot, you know, like learning things like that the natural environment in Madison is 44% of the town, I think, as, as it was defined in the 2013 P O C D and the built environment was 46% of the town. I mean, that's one reason why we kind of decided to go for the built natural environments because that's Madison. And then there's, you know, 10% that's considered plus or minus, considered undeveloped or buildable. Um, and then you see why, why there are pressures on the existing built environment and the existing natural environment because of that. So to me, that process was really important.
No, it's great. It worked great.
Well, yeah, I agree that we should keep it, but as far as be able to, for presentation purposes and to explain to people, but we do need to change the text to be the new.
If you think we do, I mean, I, I
You mean you want to wa- work through the process in the document?
That's what I, that's what I was thinking. Yeah. To leave it to show how, how we got to where we are. And in fact, because so many of the, um, recommendations or under the policies were suggested by stakeholders and other people. So we kind of gathered a lot of information, organized it. John, you did that, you know, with the different categories and the, the themes. And, um, you know, I don't, I don't know that we want to lose that necessarily.
No, I just meant the specific policies grouped under natural and then the policies grouped under built. That's what I meant to edit. I wasn't looking to change a lot.
Yeah.
The, the rest of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think, I think we can, we can add, um, some, uh, sort of, sort of through line from, from talking about the vision and, and the, the themes. You know, through, and, and maybe this would be a good place to sort of insert some, some maps to talk about, you know, how, how much of Madison is essentially spoken for in a lot of ways, whether it's, you know, whether it's, it's, it's natural and protected, whether it's developed and, and kind of, you know, off the table, um, can kind of talk about that as, as then a way to get from, from here to there thematically. Um, and yeah, but I don't think we necessarily need to preserve sort of the original structure of the goals and actions, the way we had had it before this current reorganization effort. I, I don't think we necessarily need that as a relic, but I think we can sort of tell the story of the natural and built. Uh, as, as we, as we sort of get into the, 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 the goals and actions.
Yes. That sounds cool.
Okay.
Almost good.
I think we're headed in a great direction. It might be good to set the end date, Aaron, at some point and then work back from that.
Yeah, I, I think, well, yeah, maybe we should have a or think about that, John.
Think about it. Yeah.
Be able to give a little more solid of a timeframe for our next meeting.
Yeah. What, could we, could we talk maybe or like first thing next week and kind of maybe sketch out sort of the, the, the end game?
Yeah, that's what I, I like, Aaron.
Okay.
Okay. Well, thanks again to Bob for doing this work and the presentation and, um, thank you all for following through with us. Moving along.
Thank you.
Thanks, John Gaskowski. It's great to see you back from LA.
Okay. Thanks, folks.
Thanks, John.
Okay. So on our agenda, we have some pending applications. Aaron, do you want to take them in the order that they appear on the agenda?
Sure. Um, well, let's see, 1916 Boston Post Road, the hearing is open and continued to December 21st. Um, 14 Railroad, uh, public hearing was, uh, initially scheduled for this evening and the applicants, um, had noticed defects. Um, and the legal notices did not run timely either. And so, um, we were unable to have that scheduled to open this evening. The applicant has requested that we table that hearing, um, to the December 21st meeting as well.
So should I?
So that one, we should have a motion for?
So then we table 23 dash 50 14 Railroad Avenue to our December 21st. John do so. Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have one discussion. That gives us five big tickets on the 21st. The last discussion we had trying to
We've been trying to go.
Time to go differently.
I don't know that they're necessarily.
We're never sure.
Big tickets. I, I mean Railroad Avenue, you've seen twice before and we're down to
So it's just going to be the
Yeah, we're down to eight units from 16. So, I mean, it is a public hearing, but it's significantly less than what you've approved to previous times.
Can I ask a question about the previous one? That the previous entry joined before it went?
Yeah.
Aren't they, is it incumbent upon them to come up with a proposal for what they want to do?
That will be part of the continuation.
Oh, it's been in the public here.
Yes.
They'll present it.
Yep, that's part of
They'll be presenting it to us.
And, and, and applications as they get added, um, are in the agenda as well in the documents.
Okay.
Yep. So going back to 2350, um, there's no further discussion on the table.
Aye? Did you man? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, 23 dash 51 is the Wall Street building.
This is already scheduled for hearing on December 21st.
And the files are available. Um, 23 dash 55 is 155 New Road, the P D D, that is the housing residential units.
Oh, yeah.
This is in before you as a site plan approval. Uh, so
We talked about this.
This was the master plan. The master plan came before you, and this is the, uh, detailed site development plan for the property. Um, so that is tabled to December 21st as well. And, uh, from the date of receipt, you have 65 days to, uh, render a decision on a site plan application. Um, and then for receipts this evening, uh, is 251 Boston Post Road. Again, you approve the P D D master plan and the zoning map amendment. The applicant is, uh, has now submitted again with the site plan and coastal site plan application, um, for the, uh, conversion of the rest of the club into a restaurant. Um, so those are the, essentially the same detailed plans that came before you last time. In that particular case, there was a detailed site plan at the time of P D D. So that one, uh, I, I would anticipate is a fairly straightforward.
Do we need that?
Review. Inland wetlands already approved of regular activity on that.
Great.
Just for my own application, this, um, test is already approved, right? Is this supplemental? Cause they started work.
They own it.
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's some work that has been done. Yes. Um, there was roofing and some other
Siding.
Removal siding.
Yeah. I mean, they're, I think they're starting to stabilize.
What, what happened is in, in a planned development district is it's a zoning map amendment. And so they came before the commission, um, and basically dropped that that plan development master plan on the property. So the commission at their last meeting approved that master plan concept and, and it's a two-step process. So now that that zoning, uh, map amendment was completed and the, the zone allows for restaurant use. Now the applicant is coming before the commission to get the more detailed site plan approval with the specifics, the detailed engineering. At the time of master plan, you don't necessarily have to have that detailed level of, of civil engineering.
Yes, again, just civil or, yeah, as well, like or drawings.
Well, that, so there's architectural drawings, the full construction drawings are at the time of the building permit.
Yep.
Um, to, you know.
Yeah, you, you, okay.
Typically, the applications will have, um, a review by a fire marshal will look at those and, and building official on, on commercial applications as well for accessibility around the building, things like that, AD accessibility, uh, spring term.
Sure. Okay. So next is approval.
Sure.
On November 16th through 23rd, the meeting, members present, so do say, right, hard to call it down, this morning, you want to? Motion for approval. Second. Any comments or comments?
Excellent.
One, one small one is on page three, general residents, just a general's residence to do with general is due.
That's usually my job.
Also, one question for you, Carol. Jan, made a motion and seconded it. Last means is that, uh, is that okay?
No, typically, probably someone else.
Okay.
Does anyone recall doing it?
What, what was that? Could be approval minutes?
I believe so. It's a motion.
Yeah, discussion.
Second, yeah, we, we can change that to
I mean, yeah.
Mike, yes. Makes sense. That's all I have. Uh, a vote to approve, all favor. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, approval of the 2024.
Oh, is this, this is it?
Yeah. First and third Thursdays of the month.
Got to have much choice here really. So it looks good to me.
We have one, one variation in July because the fourth of July is on a Thursday. So you'll have two Thursdays in a row. Um, unless of course, slow month and we end up canceling, we just cancel one of them. Uh, but for now, uh, we tentatively push one off a month, a week, and so that's July 11th and July 18th. And they're slated as being hybrid, just as you are currently.
Do we need to have a motion to approve?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the calendar? Or is it second?
Okay.
Like a second, make sure the discussion. You could hear, all in favor? Thank you all. Um, remarks, I actually just wanted to say, Aaron, we haven't talked about this, but in January, we re-elect or elect chair, co-chair, we hope to have a co-chair.
Vice chair.
I mean, vice chair. Um, thank you. And secretary, we've been without a vice chair. This is Elliot, yes, it's Elliot Busen. So, um, if anyone's interested, I'm happy to continue to serve as chair, but if anyone else is interested, should we send names, send our interest to you, Aaron, and as well for vice chair and for secretary?
Right. So you would do that first in your first meeting in January. Uh, we do have, I think, and maybe a couple up for reappointment uh, by the board selectmen in December. So we'll wait for January. Um, and it would be nominations really. So, um, I've had, in the past, I've had a member of the committee kind of tally up and um, bring it, you know, to the next meeting if someone's interested in doing that. Otherwise, um, just discuss it. Yeah.
Maybe, just wanted to get everyone ahead of that.
It's per charter. We do have to have the vice chair now. Um, and the chair can serve for a maximum of four years. So you have one under your belt. So you are
Do you know what? Why do you think it's?
It was at the time of the adoption of the charter.
Okay.
So the charter has been Yeah, was that?
Changed the new charter.
Yes, it changed in the new charter with the maximum term for chair. And then you'd have to take a year. So it's
Thank you. Okay. So we'll
See that.
To be discussed further or a nominees or whatever.
So we're just, we're just doing this in January.
The vote. Yep, it's, it's, uh, per charter. Again, it's the first meeting in, of the year.
Yeah. Thanks, Eric. Anything else?
Um, just a reminder, folks, for, um, your training, if you have done any training, um, I assume you've all kept track. We're going through our records. Just to confirm. So it was those, um, who were seated on the board as of January 1st, 2023 are required to have four hours of training by January 1st, 2024. Um, so that's not all of you, but it is, um, some of, most of you. Okay. So, um, I will reach out if I feel you may be short and give you some opportunities for
Catch up.
A quiet winter evening before Christmas.
Holiday or New Year's spirit.
So I think, we, I think we all sent Maria.
Right. So based off of that, I have to tally them up.
And self-reporting sounds.
But it is really rough.
Are we just, just curiously, are, are we going to think about how we're going to handle having so many public hearings on one night? Are we ever gonna? Are we just gonna let?
Well, that's
Can we start an hour earlier on the, on those second Thursdays? Possibly. I mean, something that
Well, the, the quicker you finish the P O C D, you'll have your second meeting back.
That's true.
True. Is really what, that's what's causing this.
But now we're talking about possibly another year before that.
No, 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 no. We're talking about a few months, like get this done by the spring.
Right.
There's no reason for that to, you know, we're hoping to have funding to begin a comprehensive zoning code rewrite in July. So we need to have some time before that to, uh, decompress.
Tell it, yeah, a little time to do.
It's the way that your camera has, uh, frozen.
Yeah, we just saw that.
Preferred camera.
It's not working. You can hear us.
John Morgan. Picture of Bob Reinhardt scowling.
Just one, one last item.
It caught my good side.
Uh, we are looking to, uh, hopefully schedule an executive session with the commission, um, in, um, uh, six o'clock on the, um, first meeting in January. So it would give us an hour before our, um, regular seven o'clock meeting.
Oh, for the ongoing.
Yep, um, to, to speak. And that would be, um, regarding, uh, the alleged litigation. Um, so I just wanted to throw that up. So you knew that was coming up. Um, I can send an email for a general availability for six o'clock and then we'll schedule that as a special meeting. So I just wanted to throw that out, so you knew that was coming up. I can send an email for a general availability for six o'clock, and then we'll schedule that as a special meeting.
So that's January four.
With our attorneys. Yes. That's the first Thursday? Yes.
Any other comments, questions? Matt, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Good. Andy made an emotion to adjourn, sorry. John do so.
John and Bob also raised their hands. They're eager.
All in favor?
Thank you both.
Great, thank you, everyone.
Good night. Thanks for Bye, thanks for coming.